Finally, a great big thank you to our athletic director Gary Graziano and to Rockland High School Principal Dr. John Harrison, who both have spent probably 100 hours piece making sure that these seasons happen for our kids. Fall season, fall season two started today. That's football and volleyball and cheerleading, although cheerleading this year will be a non-competitive situation for them. They will support the football team during games. This past week, Dr. Harrison and Jane Hackett, our business administrator, met with all of the coaches and with Gary Graziano and the kids to review the protocols that were in place. Jane, could you say a few words about that and also explain the return to play policy that's just been implemented?
Yes, thank you. Dr. Harrison and Mrs. Graziano organized a meeting for all of the coaches for the fall season two, and Dr. Harrison went over all of the protocols that were expected of both the students and the coaches. In particular, some new things that were implemented for fall too is that students will be doing a self attestation at each day to verify that they do not have any symptoms prior to participating in any work, excuse me, in any practices or in any games. In addition, we are fully following the MIAA Medical Subcommittee recommendations on the return to play with assistance with our, with the athletic trainer. And students at a minimum who have been diagnosed with COVID will be required to receive a doctor's note for clearance. That'll be signed off by Dr. Harrison, and they will also participate in a return to play protocol under the guidance of the athletic trainer, which at a minimum will require practice at one game prior to being allowed to participate in any competition. In addition, the coaches themselves and the athletic director and Dr. Harrison got all of the students together, and Dr. Harrison, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we had virtually 100% attendance by all the potential players. And I think we've learned some things from this past season that we're going to apply to next season, and we are really looking forward to it.
And again, closing, I just want to thank all of the adults and parents who were involved with driving their kids to 5:00 AM ice hockey practices and basketball practices and all over the place. Thank you for making the season work for the kids. For some kids, we have to remember athletics are why they get out of bed and get excited to come to school every day. So making those things happen for our kids is incredibly important, especially now. And I want to thank all those adults who are named again for your work this season. And that's all I have for superintendent.
Football in February.
Thank you, Dr. Cron and Ms. Hackett. We'll go back to accepting the minutes for the meeting of February 16th, 2021.
Motion to accept.
With second, and then we'll go to roll call. Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hennessy?
Finally, yes. I apologize. I don't know what happened. Zoom loves me. So, yes.
Okay, Mr. Biggins.
It's in the last.
He's stuck on mute. Hang on. He's coming.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, we made it through that. Now we'll go on to financial reports for January. We have the school department, the high school student activities, the middle school student activities, the cafeteria, December and January, and the daycare.
Questions. Five motions to accept.
Thank you. With five seconds. Thank you. I'll do a roll call. Again, Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hennessy?
Five yeses.
And Mr. Biggins?
Yes.
And I'm a five yeses as well. Thank you all. We'll get right to curriculum corner for Jefferson School with Mrs. Scheifele, Mrs. Louizzi, if I'm saying that wrong, and Ms. Mello. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Michelle Scheifele, Principal of Jefferson Elementary. And with me today, I have Kim Louizzi, my EL teacher, and it's her third year at Jefferson. So if she can just say hello so you can see her.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kim Louizzi. Nice to meet you all.
And Teresa Mello, our EL tutor at Jefferson. If you want to just say hello, Teresa. Unmute. Is it easier?
Of course, I would say hi unmute. Hi, I'm Teresa Mello.
I just wanted to let you know that we wanted to share Jefferson's EL program, however, making it clear that each elementary school has the same model that we have. This year, we were fortunate enough to hire a EL tutor at every school, every elementary school, to be a liaison between the families and the school. And it has been very successful, and we are very excited about it. So Teresa is our EL tutor, but each elementary school has the same model. So when you see our model, it's the same across all three elementary. I'm just going to share my screen. Everyone see it?
We did.
You see it?
Excellent. Yes, we see it.
Okay, so I will, I'll let Kim Louizzi take it away.
Well, hello. Tonight, I'm going to share a brief presentation about our EL program. EL is an acronym for English learners, and you may recognize its former terminology. It used to be called ESL. So the newer term now is EL. So let's see. Next, please. Who am I? I am the EL teacher at Jefferson Elementary School with expertise and passion for educating and supporting and empowering our English learners in our multilingual and multicultural community. So the students know me as Mrs. Louizzi. I'm an EL teacher, a mother of two elementary-age daughters and a wife. I, my professional background and expertise is in bilingual education and EL, and I'm also a certified medical translator and Spanish interpreter. I have taught in urban and suburban schools throughout the US as well as abroad in Spain, and I am just so happy to be here within the Rockland Public Schools. Like Michelle said, I've been here for three years. Yes. So I would like to start us off with a little quote that reflects my own philosophy around working with children. I'm a huge proponent of positive reinforcement and true active listening to children and empowerment, which leads me to the words of Heim Geinert. As a teacher, I possess a tremendous power to make a child's life miserable or joyous. I can be a tool of torture or an instrument to heal. In all situations, it is my response that decides whether a crisis will be escalated or de-escalated, a child humanized or dehumanized. I believe every child has inner beauty and talent and can succeed when provided with the proper guidance to channel, to channel their talents in a positive direction. Next, Ms. Mello. I would like to introduce my other half, my new other half. Ms. Mello, she's out there. You all, you all saw her. And she's somewhere in the Zoom abyss. I can't see her at this very moment, but let's see, I'm just going to scooch over this part of the screen. So Ms. Tadessa Mello is our fabulous new EL tutor. She is multilingual in Portuguese, Spanish, and English, and she works with our students as a teacher and also as a family liaison to bridge our families linguistically, culturally, and academically. Her work to support students and families during remote learning has been absolutely invaluable. Ms. Mello is a loving mother of two children within the Rockland Public School family. She is passionate about this community and our diverse families and students. I would like to take a little minute to provide background on Jefferson Elementary School, which is, you know, a smaller reflection of Rockland Public Schools in general. So we have a growing population of language learners within Jefferson Elementary School. The number of students who qualify for services based upon assessments can range anywhere from 25 students to 40 in a given year. As you may know, the majority of our students are from Brazil and Portuguese speakers. We also have students represented who speak Arabic, Cape Verdean Creole, Spanish, and Vietnamese. Our children's linguistic abilities here at Jefferson Elementary School range immensely, from newcomers who just recently arrived to the US to students who demonstrate high levels of linguistic competency. Within our instruction, we focus on the four domains of language: listening, speaking, reading, and writing. Our services vary based upon student need and, and the need of the individual students. So for example, students may receive small group instruction within our classroom, which could be anywhere from two to four students, sometimes five. Well, now it's four maximum. It used to be five or six. Or we do some push-in sessions within the mainstream classroom, and students may get two services a week, or they may get five services, and the amount of time varies based upon individual need and linguistic ability. One of our major focus, one major focus always, but especially this year, now that we have Ms. Mello on our team also, is EL student family and student outreach. The biggest challenge for many of our EL families and students has been accessing remote curriculum, and that's been across the board for many of our families. On top of navigating a completely different academic system that's complex, there's also the layer of technology and everything being in a second language for a lot of our families. So this has been a big challenge for a lot of, a lot of our students. And Ms. Mello has worked with, with our remote students daily to support them in curriculum in terms of foundations, which is our phonics-based program. She's been tutoring students after school, during vacations. And in fact, this week, she even started our new and exciting program for beginner ELs to join us in school for academic support during their remote weeks. So that's been awesome. Another very important piece of our family and community outreach is that we've been collaborating with the school adjustment counselor so that we can continue to deliver clothing, food, academic resources like books and materials to our families in need of support. So this has been an ongoing effort, and this year with the remote learning, we've even bulked that piece up a bit more. This is an example. These are some photos of students from last year, obviously without masks. And I just wanted to kind of show you how EL classes, how we work to bridge US culture and language. So we, this year is, you know, obviously more challenging to do pieces like this, but we use multi-sensory and multifaceted activities to give students access into the language of the mainstream classroom. So for example, you may see in the center of the slide, the book pop, right? So that was a piece of literature that students were working on within their big classroom. That was part of the curriculum. And then we would mirror some of that work within the EL class. But in addition, we would add extension activities, right? So we blew bubbles, we blew bubbles with gum, we used milk and straws and blew more bubbles, and we wrote about it and illustrated. And in this way, students have the ability to use spontaneous language and, and have fun while they're working on vocabulary. So you may think, oh, bubbles, you know, that doesn't seem that complicated, but there's so much embedded language within a book that seems like it could be, you know, pretty basic. So bubbles, liquid, pop, the whole slew, straw. So all of this terminology they need to have in order to access classroom discussions. And so we work on providing that through all four domains. Next, we'd like to share with you a little student interview. This is Crystal. She is in second grade. You'll see her in just a minute. She.
Sorry?
Oh, no problem. She, she moved from Brazil about one and a half years ago. So mind you, she moved last, she came to us last September, but after March, she was learning remote until September. And when she first arrived, she was able to communicate in single-word utterances, yes, no. She didn't have access into most academic and social conversation. So language was all new for her here. So this is going to be an interview with her. And just, just as a disclaimer, it's, I was taken from six, six feet, and I had a mask and a shield, but we wanted you to be able to hear what she has to say.
It is February 2021.
Can we all hear?
Hi, can you tell everyone what your name is?
Lisa.
Good. And what grade are you in, Crystal?
Grade two.
Grade two. And how do you?
Oops, sorry.
Like school so far?
Because I learned and thinking, I know when to go off to school because I like it too. And I want to keep this for later.
We would like to have you here forever, too. Where were you born?
Why?
When you were a baby, where did you live?
I think, I think I'm like, capchav, capchava.
Yes, in Brazil.
Yeah.
And so do you speak another language? Do you speak English and another language?
Yeah, I'm, I don't know if you're thinking other English.
What is your other language that you speak?
La multa cha.
Oh, I also speak Spanish. And at home, you also speak Portuguese, right?
Yes.
How does it feel when you're in English class and you're starting to learn English more and more?
Because, why you say any sentence?
Do you like learning English?
Yes, so, but so because my teacher is so good and I want to keep her sheet whatever. And I want to keep so, so all my library sheet.
That is so nice, Crystal. What felt hard for you when you first started learning English?
Nothing, because my teacher say you can do, and I, I, I can learn and I will know like, like all things. And, and you, you is make me and Miss Mello.
That is so nice to hear, Crystal. What's your favorite part of learning?
Because you do so things and funny and it's cool.
Do you like reading? Do you like writing?
Yeah.
Do you like math? What's your favorite subject?
Math, because I'm so good at math.
That is great, Crystal.
And English class, more English class.
Well, thank you. So I'm going to turn off this video. Thank you for sharing. Do you want to just say goodbye?
Bye.
Very good.
Yes. She, so Crystal's made incredible progress. I have, I had, I had typed up a little bit of the excerpt of the interview. I don't know if you heard, "What felt hard for you when you first started learning English?" And she said, "Nothing, because my teacher says you can do it, and I can. And now I know like all things." So Crystal, Crystal has made incredible progress in her receptive and expressive oral English language skills. She continues to work hard. She continues to love learning and make Ms. Mello and I just smile and laugh daily. So that was just one little interview I wanted to share with you. We hope, we hope you enjoyed this glimpse into our EL program at Jefferson Elementary School. As you can see, it is our students, their contagious passion and love for life and learning that continue to guide and inspire us to be the most thoughtful and empowering teachers we can be. Thank you so much for listening and opening your minds and hearts.
I have a question. I always do.
Okay, Mr.
I actually have two questions. Go ahead. Can I go?
Yes, you can go.
The question is, when you receive, when you, we receive a student coming from another district, are we getting information about where they stand on their, and, and do you reevaluate them to see if they're up there?
That's a great question. Yes. So there's a state mandated test called ACCESS.
Yes.
Both the students coming from anywhere within the country where they've already, and it usually happens in January. So we have a whole record of students' data and testing information that comes standard, like they're standardized testing, and then there's also the additional assessments that come.
Okay. Do you reevaluate their assessments?
Yes, every year they're assessed. And then we also have an assessment called the WAPT that's done as well.
All right. So but you don't, you reevaluate them as soon as they come in?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's what I was getting. Okay. And now, do you find how consistent with your evaluation today, your evaluation?
Well, so ACCESS is standardized, and ACCESS is the, it's kind of like an MCAS when it comes to EL learners. So it is, if I can just like explain a little bit how it works, some of it is, like the speaking portion of ACCESS is through a headset, a microphone. So it's not with like a teacher interaction. So sometimes within speaking, there may be like differences that you'd get when an actual tester is face-to-face with someone as opposed to the ACCESS testing, which is state mandated and a little bit different. So sometimes there are like slight discrepancies there.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Sounds like a good plan.
Oh, awesome. And I wanted, Ms. Mello was going to add a little something. I appreciate the questions, but before maybe we open it up. Ms. Mello, are you there?
She's unmuted. There she is.
Technology and I, that's not like Cristal and I and us. I just wanted to say that this is, being an EL tutor at the Jefferson School has been a great opportunity. I am quite grateful for this, as both my boys have, were students at the Jefferson and now are at the middle school. And this is just a wonderful opportunity to see, to see things from both perspectives. I've been a parent, and now I am working within the school and helping children learn English, which is always so rewarding, as you could see by our Cristal little video. She is a joy. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Louizzi and Ms. Mello. Appreciate it. We're very proud that our EL program has come so far. And thanks to Teresa and Kim.
I would have to agree that this is huge for our Rockland to be able to have. So we can't thank you enough. It is, imagine being the little kids coming in and not knowing how to speak, right? And then seeing your faces and getting to know. And now, look how comfortable she just was to speak and laughing, enjoy us. And that's what you hope for when they come from other countries to us. So we can't thank you enough. And Teresa, if I didn't say hi to Michael and Simon, right? I'm blessed that my daughter hangs out with her son. So we are lucky to have Teresa in our world as well. Do we have any other questions? Go ahead. Mr. Biggins is putting his hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, just for Ms. Louizzi and Ms. Mello, thank you. Great job. And that video of Cristal, is that how it's pronounced correctly? Boy, if that didn't make you smile, you know, I don't know what does, just kind of gets excited about education and seeing how excited she was. And I think she said at one point excitedly, "I can learn all things." And a really powering thing to hear any, you know, child say, but particularly a kid who's just moved here from across the world just a, you know, a little over a year and a half ago. And then when she was asked how, how she likes learning English, just how genuinely excited she was about that, and saying that she hopes she never has to leave. I mean, what a great, what a great representation of her experience at Jefferson School. So thank you for the good work that you're doing. I mean, Rockland is a diverse community and becoming more diverse, and clearly it's a great home for all of us. My question is for you, how are you doing with your challenges of remote learning and helping kids learn EL with the challenges and the constraints that we're currently all under?
Yes, so it's been, it's been an interesting process, especially, I'd say, starting this fall. And there's kind of been an evolution in terms of the way we've been working with our students and figuring out needs as they arise. So in the very beginning of the year, we were focused on having students come into the, like, you know, just a parent and a student come into the school and actually helping them navigate the technology. So we did a lot of just like tutorials using Google Classroom and, and showing them how to access everything that they would need to access. So that was like a big first step, and it took, you know, it took a lot of time at the beginning to get people in, sometimes multiple exposures, because as we all know, technology, you know, sometimes you see it once, and then the next time it's just out. So we did a lot of work around that type of outreach, but bringing families in and showing them the technology, showing them the resources for each classroom. So the binders and the different paperwork and, you know, every classroom maybe has their nuances. And so we really wanted to get families on board and comfortable. And then from that piece, then Ms. Mello arrived in October. And before we, I was working with Selena, and I was doing, you know, with different support people throughout the districts, and Naya, we were doing that. And then once Ms. Mello came, we were able to support families consistently within the school in terms of she was reaching out and building relationships with all of the families on phone, text, call, emails, any way she could to build these relationships so that families felt comfortable reaching out when they had concerns or they had challenges. And then shortly after that, that piece, Tadessa started supporting students remotely through Google Classroom with foundations. So she was holding two remote sessions a day for different grade levels to access, working on phonics. And she was scaffolding those, those foundations lessons. And so she started with that piece, and I was working, I'm working with the face-to-face students. And so it's been, it's been quite an evolution. And now we have the remote students, the beginner remote students coming into her to work with her, and she scaffold.
You froze.
Oh, you froze, kitten, for a minute.
Am I still frozen? Somehow I feel like if I move, it's going to help. Yeah, so it's, it's been quite, it's been quite a process, and it keeps getting better and better, even though it still has its layers and its challenge.
You're making it sound really simple, I have to say. So we can't thank you enough for all you're doing. Mr. Mills has his hand up.
Yeah. What's the predominant language that the students are coming in with? Is it Spanish or Portuguese or Chinese?
At Jefferson Elementary School, it's predominantly Brazilian students who speak Portuguese.
Right.
And that's out of our caseload right now. That's all except for just a few students. So yes, there's a definite dominant population. I think it varies from school, it varies from schools to school, and especially the high school level, where all of the, you know, schools are coming together. But within, I can just speak to Jefferson.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have questions? Jamie, Emily, go ahead, Emily.
I would just like to say thank you to you both. You guys are a great asset to our public school community, and especially the relationship building that you have, Ms. Mello, with the parents and families. I think that bridges the gap that there was to make them feel more comfortable and part of the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Awesome. Thank you so much for attending tonight. Great presentation. We appreciate you coming.
I'll do that.
Thank you very much for your support.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Move on to old business with completed fundraisers. And you all don't need to stay on with us. I'm sure you have families and dinner and things like that. So we appreciate you coming, but we won't be insulted if you leave. Bye-bye. Thank you. Completed fundraisers, we have the class of 2021, 2022, did Cupcake Charlie sales on Valentine's Day, February 14th. They raised $1,718. So that was pretty exciting. Great job to them. Congratulations. Next, we have the FY21, FY22 Financial Status. I'm assuming that's going to Jane. Ms. Hackett?
Steady to improving.
All good.
No, last, last week, we presented to the, to the Board of Selectmen and to your folks both the current FY21 and the FY22 status. We're going to speak a little bit more underneath the, underneath the letter that's being sent. But we have discovered that we are one of 277 communities whose enrollment went down. It's 277 communities in the Commonwealth whose enrollment went down. So we are hopeful that the House Ways and Means Committee is, is going to step in, and we can talk about that a little bit more later. And we're in some discussions with Town Hall over some tactical moves to optimize the various funding sources that we have at both the state and local level that will help us land FY21. We have a fabulous meeting with our office staff on Thursday. We have a follow-up one tomorrow following last week's payroll. And, you know, just like we said, we believe that what we've presented is the seller and that there are many ladders available to us and staircases that we can build. available to us and staircases that we can build to get ourselves up. So feeling a little bit more optimistic today than than last Tuesday.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation at the Selectman meeting. That was a very long Select meeting that Ms. Poor Lizzie, Emily, Jane and I sat through before we got to have Jane present for us on our behalf, and she did a wonderful job. So thank you, Jane, for that. Thank you for your dedication to Rockland Public Schools.
I would just like to say that the Selectmen were fabulous, receptive and supportive. And again, we'll get to that a little bit at the letter, but it was they were really very receptive.
Great. The relationship that we are now having with the Town Hall is just, I think, tremendous. We've made great strides with them. So okay, we'll move on to in person versus remote school committee meetings. I received information from WRPS with some of our information from our questions from last week's meeting. So I'm just gonna read what I received. One question was about the hybrid models. Alone, just to have Zoom licensing would be $4,500 a year on top of the $3,000 that we already spent. Hardware costs for just the studio itself would be $40 to $50,000 in range and then add in if the Town Hall wanted to do the same thing. Post, we're curious as to what the post COVID municipal meetings would look like. So WRPS is reluctant to spend that money until we maybe see down the line what things like that might end up being necessary, or if we revert back to being fully in person at some point. They say that they do not see any way we could proceed with a hybrid model for this academic year, which with those costs, I think that they're right on that. So that was one question that we had had. In order to, another question that we had was to accommodate more than just our committee. So they said that they can accommodate only the committee and perhaps one or two guests from inside the RPS universe. Curriculum corners with having parents and students attending would probably not be a good idea for this year. And then finally, for moving to another high school location, whether it be the auditorium or whatnot, it's a great deal of hardware that would need to be moved back and forth. They're saying that's a nonstarter and it's just not possible. So I just wanted to say thank you to WRPS for reaching back out to me with the answers. We appreciate the time that you're putting in for us here tonight. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
The only comment I had, I was thinking about this when I saw this on the agenda. And one of the things I think is that we as out, I hate to say it this way, we as outside is with the the community that is there now getting together and kind of leveling off is that I would like to, you know, probably abstain from being in person. The reason of that is that we're all moving around the community and I don't think as myself, introducing, you know, any whatevers in into the into the school community right now would make sense to me. That's just my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Anyone else have any comments? Go ahead, Mr. Biggins.
I do. I appreciate WRPS. They do a great job on everything. Dave and his team, Chris, Lisa, they're awesome. But WRPS covers our meetings. They're not, this isn't a WRPS meeting. It's a school committee meeting where we discuss policy, where we try to do our best to make the best decisions for our kids and for the taxpaying public in my opinion deserves a little bit better access to our meetings than we do now. I understand I'm probably in the minority of the opinion here and I'm not gonna get into emotional debates like we did last week, but simply to state sort of how I feel. You know, right now, we've got some teachers, some educators, paraprofessionals, custodians, cafeteria staff, daycare students, they're safely attending school every day. And they're doing it safely and they're doing it well. Our teachers, our staff, our administration are keeping them safe. They're keeping them healthy. I feel that remote learning meetings, excuse me, remote meetings are simply not as effective as a committee in meetings to be able to communicate. We've seen examples of it in this meeting just tonight. I mean, my dumb hands had my thing on mute. People freeze. Quite honestly, it can be difficult sometimes to tell when a person's done speaking. Voting is done differently. You know, I I think the community simply just deserves better access. And I think we deserve, we should be better leaders in saying do is and not saying do as I say and not as I do. I know at some point, we're gonna need to move forward with getting our kids back into the building, or at least getting kids, or at least having the discussion of how we're going to do that. And I I just don't know how we can even begin that discussion from our laptops at home in good conscience. So I I understand if if I'm the only one that that's that feels this way, but I do feel that way strongly. So of course, I'll always respect the decision of the committee.
That it?
Yes.
Say that wasn't a lot. I just didn't want to cut you off. Thank you. Your opinion matters, Mr. Biggins. So I'm glad that you were here and able to speak to it.
And that being said, I'd like to move that we return back into in person meetings.
Okay, there's a motion on the table. Do I have a second? Jamie is seconding. Okay, I'm gonna roll call vote. So I'm gonna start with you, Mr. Biggins.
Yes.
Jamie? Say it again. Did you say yes? Your mouth moved and no words came out. Yes. Ms. Davidson?
No.
Mr. Mills?
No.
And I'm a no as well. So sorry, three to two. But I do appreciate him that you got to say.
Don't need to say sorry to me. That's, you know, you know, you say sorry, that's okay.
I'm saying thank you, not sorry.
Sorry.
All right.
Question. So I think this might be my first time having split things. So maybe this is something we take offline. Procedurally, when can that be reevaluated? Or is it just in the future, another motion gets made? Or I guess being my first year here, I wasn't sure of the the policies in that nature. Like us revisiting this topic, or is it dead for the year? Or what's the part, the the next steps, I guess?
That could be revisited at the next meeting.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, you can read anytime. As long as it's on the agenda and posted.
Very good. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Always ask Jamie. Always stop us to ask anything like that. Don't feel that you can't. Okay?
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
Regarding the Zoom meeting link being posted on the agenda, I know that that was brought up last time. Is that something that we can do going forward? So members of the public or other people can log in and watch our meeting?
Go ahead, Dave. Mr. Cable Murphy is here with us from WRPS.
I can address that question. It's I'm sorry, I completely blanked on the question that I'm addressing.
Yeah, to repeat the question. Can the link be posted on the our meeting agenda and shared with the public so they could either log in and join the meeting?
We make these meetings available both on Channel 14 and through WRPS online, which I fully admit can be a little cludgy to navigate your way through. But we try to avoid posting the Zoom information unless it's a public hearing or unless we can't provide access to it in any other way. So rather than open up the possibility, however remote of our having an issue with an unwanted guest, we try not to post it unless absolutely necessary. And that's something we've just sort of worked through with Town Hall over the course of the past year.
Okay, thank you. Going forward, ask as a school committee could publicize the channels and options of how to watch the meeting?
I'd be happy to draft that information together and get it to the superintendent's office for distribution.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Great question as well, Emily. Anybody else have anything, any questions? Okay. So we're gonna move on to then a request for approval of the 2021, 2022 Program of Studies. We have Dr. Harrison here with us. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me. The this evening, we have very few changes in anticipation of the 2021, 2022 school year. Actually, the main goal is to get back to our Program of Studies pre-COVID. So we feel our Program of Studies is very robust. It's a document we're very proud of. But we're trying to re-implement the Program of Studies that we had to really edit this year to make this hybrid model work. So I'll just go over the new changes that we're proposing. First, we are trying to offer an additional history course. That's a full year course called Psychology Sociology: A Study of the Human Mind and Human Behavior. This would be a one-credit course offered for juniors and seniors. We're really trying to push seniors in particular, having a full course load of academics. A lot of times, our seniors feel like they're, they need 22 credits to graduate and they can get 18 credits up until their senior year, let's say. So they only need four credits senior year. So we find that they're not taking the most impressive array of academics. So we would like to offer more for our college prep kids, is that may not be taking the AP Psychology or Honors European History. This gives the kids now a third option for seniors. Another elective we'd like to offer in the History Department is called 20th Century Social Movements in the United States. This would be a half-credit course. And then the English Department would like to offer an elective called Literature in Contemporary Society. And this would be a half-credit course as well. With our electives, we try to mix them up, as I'm sure you found over the years, to try to give students more choice that we're not offering the same courses every year. We try to cycle things in and out. These were just two new courses that the History and the English Departments have proposed. And then the Phys Ed Department, this course, Health Matters, used to be called Senior Issues. We renamed it to Health Matters because we wanted to sell it to juniors and seniors so that we can increase the enrollment. And a prior year, we were only able to get seven kids. We weren't able to enroll and have that class. So by changing the name, we couldn't call it Senior Issues and have juniors. So we changed the name, Health Matters. And then the last thing we have is a senior privilege. We have our accreditation coming in September. NEASC will be visiting for four days. And one of the things they do look for is senior privileges. Our seniors have actually done this this year with our hybrid model. They've had this privilege. It was something we had to implement at the last minute to make the schedules work. But the seniors have done a phenomenal job in 2021 of doing this, that they've proven that they have the independence to take this on. And what I'm personally getting out of this as a principal and our staff is we want kids to be taking more rigorous course programs senior year. So if a kid is enrolled in four academic full-year classes, English, math, history, science, and world language, this is this is something we want to strive for. So they're taking four out of the five, these five classes. So they're taking really four academic full-year classes. And then they have two electives versus taking, some of the kids are just taking two full-year classes, English and math, and taking five electives. We really want them having a balance. So this would say, hey, if you're gonna take four full-year classes and you have good attendance, you have very few tardies and dismissals. It says four or more unexcused absences in a term, or I should say four or less, or less than four tardies and dismissals and no conduct infractions. You can have a senior privilege, which means you can come in for the start of the second period or leave at the end of, right before the last period. So they get in place of their directed study. So this is not in place of a course. It's in place of their direct. So just a little perk for our seniors, the aim for. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. We had that when I attended Rockland High School back just a few years ago. We got to have senior. Yes.
I I have, I have a quick question, just to go back, something like is that does it, does this require a first reading and a subsequent vote? Or is this okay to just vote on tonight? I'm I'm kind of cloudy on that right now.
Historically, there's been a first and a second reading.
Yeah.
The committee in the past has voted to skip the first reading and go directly to a second reading.
Okay.
That was mainly due at the time to printing issues. We wanted to get it printed and distributed. I don't think we're in a particular hurry. So I think technically this would be a first reading.
Okay. You you want.
Wave it if they want.
Okay.
I thought we were sort of trying to get it done, Dr. Harrison. Am I wrong?
It would be great if we could get it done. As Dr. Cron mentioned, it's not a killer. If we can't get it done tonight, the benefit of getting it done is it just gives us two additional weeks of planning in terms of meeting with the eighth graders. We can't get it approved tonight. That's okay. We can make it work either way. Our preference is to get it waived. If not, we'll make it work.
Motion to approve.
Motion to waive first.
Wait, Emily has a question. Hang on. Sorry, gentlemen.
Just regarding on the list, Jamie Hennessy's name was not listed. It was Mike Garofalo's.
Sorry, Mrs. Hennessy, we fixed that this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. I was gonna approve as Mike, but that's okay. Okay, Mr. Biggins put up a motion.
I have a second. To approve if it was helpful to them in planning and getting them off the ground. Any, I feel like any help that we can give Dr. H and getting things done nowadays with the challenges we have would be helpful. So I would move to approve.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have a question. I I think I, in my opinion, I think we have a motion to a wave and then a motion to approve. That's just my opinion.
I'm not sure of the answer to that. Dr. Cron, do you know that answer? I can't hear you.
Yes, there's a motion to waive the first reading and that should be voted on.
Right.
Then there should be a motion to accept the Program of Studies.
Okay.
Okay. So we have a motion to waive. Do I have a second?
Second.
Emily, put up a second. We'll do a roll call. Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hennessy?
Yes.
Mr. Biggins?
Sure, yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, now we have, go back to you. We're gonna let Mr. Biggins have it since he said.
Okay, that's right.
Mr. Biggins?
Yes.
Oh, you gotta second it. Somebody's.
Second. Emily already had seconded.
Okay.
Okay, some roll coming back around. Mr. Biggins, say yes please again.
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hennessy?
Yes.
And then Mr. Mills?
Yes.
And I'm a yes on that too. Gosh. All right. Thank you, Dr. Harrison, for coming and enduring all of that. Dr. Cron has his hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I just want to point out that the Program of Studies is one of two documents that I would consider perhaps the most important that any high school in the country compiles and publishes on an annual basis. The Program of Studies tells the world what Rockland High School is offering its students. When colleges evaluate our students for acceptance or programs or the military, they look at our Program of Studies. It's an incredibly important document. And the second most important, in my opinion, is the Student Handbook, which also tells the world our values and beliefs and how we operate the school. So I just want to say thank you to Dr. Harrison and to Margaret Blatt and to everyone else, all the teachers who had input into the Program of Studies. I will hold our Program of Studies against any high school in the nation. It is an excellent, rigorous, well-thought-out, logical, powerful Program of Studies. And I just want to congratulate Dr. Harrison and his staff on completing it yet again. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Thank you again, Dr. Harrison. Okay, we'll go on to the joint letter regarding Chapter 70 Funding from Selectmen and School Committee Members. Jane, do you want it?
I've got it.
You got it. Sorry.
That's okay. No worries. So the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee, actually, I believe the order it went in was the the School Committee is writing the letter and the Board of Selectmen is co-signing the letter. And so I want to, for the record, read the letter. This letter is is addressed to Senator Keenan.
Can I interrupt you one second? You're really soft.
I know.
You're hardly, I can hardly hear you. If you're gonna read a letter.
Same here.
Can you hear me any better now?
No.
No, no.
Well, that's awful.
Really?
Jane, you have the.
Now we froze. There you do.
Why don't you read it? Can you hear Jane better? Why don't you read it, can you hear Jane better?
Hello?
Yes, I can hear Jane better.
Okay, so this is the, the text of the letter. In January FY twenty-one's proposed House One budget, the town of Rockland was one of approximately thirty towns across the Commonwealth due to receive more than one point five million dollars in additional Chapter seventy state aid as a result of the passage of the Student Opportunities Act. Rockland's low-income status, high number of English-as-a-second-language learner students in special education enrollment made Rockland a perfect example of the type of community targeted for additional funding to the Student Opportunity Act. We were thrilled to think of the numerous interventions we could now provide our high-needs students. Even with the drastic COVID budget reductions of FY twenty-one, Rockland still received an increase of eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and one dollars in Chapter seventy for FY twenty-one. Two weeks ago, the governor released the House One budget for FY twenty-two, and we were shocked to see Rockland's Chapter seventy at only a sixty-seven thousand dollar increase, the thirty dollar per child minimum. After discussions with the Department of Elementary Second, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, it appears that our enrollment decline by seventy-five students or three point two percent was the driving factor. Our enrollment decline was COVID-related. Homeschooling increased from twenty-four to nine, in nineteen to forty-six and twenty, and is consistent with the statewide decline of three point two percent. The financial impact is devastating. We suspect that we are not the only district in this situation, and respectfully ask that Rockland's situation be brought to the attention of the House Ways and Means Committee. We also request that temporary COVID enrollment declines somehow be held harmless for FY twenty-two and Chapter seventy allocations. A similar hold harmless, a similar hold harmless for Chapter, for FY twenty-two, Chapter seventy was funded in the House One for twenty districts whose Chapter seventy would have declined this year had the Student Opportunity Formula not been implemented. We thank you for your support of public, public education, and we welcome the opportunity to work with you to address what we believe was an unintended Chapter seventy COVID-related outcome for Rockland. And then it is signed by all members of the, their signature lines for all members of the School Committee and the Board of Selectmen, and there's a carbon copy to the Commissioner of Education.
Okay.
Thank you, Jane, for reading.
So if I could, we did, I did today, actually with Mr. Mullin, from the Selectmen, attend a riveting Chapter seventy seminar, which we went over three hundred and forty-two formulas. And what provides us with what our allocation is, and if I could just share a screen, Madam Chair?
You may.
Okay, am I sharing?
Not yet, well, your screen's there, but not what you want to share, just your icons.
Okay, let me see if I can. Now, I'm going to start sharing?
You had it. Go back.
Do you have it?
I have it.
Okay, well, this is just, in an absolute nutshell, this is our Massachusetts Chapter seventy allocation. Last year, we received fourteen million, seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars in Chapter seventy. All right. Our foundation aid, as determined through the formulas that I talked about, is fourteen million, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars, it's seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and two. This number is approximately six thousand, that's six thousand dollars less than this, which is a point oh, 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 six O's, four percent difference. That six thousand dollar difference kicks us into minimum aid. And gives us the sixty-seven thousand dollar increase, as opposed to anywhere between eight hundred and seventy thousand and one point six million. All right, so what I learned is that we are far from alone, and there are two hundred and seventy-six other districts who are in a similar boat with enrollment decline. With that type of numbers, we're becoming more optimistic that the House Ways and Means Committee is going to listen to our letters and the letters of others who are writing to bring what we truly believe is a COVID-related phenomenon statewide of enrollment decline of folks pulling children out of school for homeschooling and sending them to private schools. So a more specific ask, I think, is formulating out there, where we actually are asking, will be asking the House Ways and Means Committee to disregard this year's enrollment numbers and adopt last year's enrollment numbers for all districts across the Commonwealth. Which could have a very positive impact, not just for us, but for the two hundred and seventy-six other communities who are in the same boat.
Thanks, Jane. Go ahead, Ms. Davidson.
Jane, today you said you found out a lot of other communities were in the same boat as us. What are some of the steps that they are taking to get their voice heard with the House Ways and Means Committee?
They asked for a copy of our letter.
Okay. Okay, then.
Did you give it to them?
Not yet, it's not, it's not, it's not signed, you know, but again, I mean, similar to the vaccine, you know, situation, I think that Rockland's been very, you know, aggressive in, in identifying issues and bringing them to the attention of our state delegation who's taking action on our behalf.
I agree. We seem to be in the forefront to a lot of things happening this year.
So the letter's gone forward, oh, we signed it today, didn't we?
Yes.
It's still getting signatures, so hopefully the signatures will be completed as of tomorrow, and then the letter can go forward, am I right, Dr. Cron?
That's correct.
Okay, when it goes.
We can hear you, Dr. Cron, just so you know, we can hear you, you were just soft.
Okay.
When it goes forward, could you let us know so we can call?
Yes.
Yes, we have a press release as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? No, okay, thank you, Jane. We will move on to personnel information for January and February, do you have anything to add, Dr. Cron?
Do not.
No, I was going to say, this is the smallest list I think we've had this year, so that's exciting, that maybe we're settling in here in February. On to the last thing, public service announcements, I'm going to start with Mrs. Davidson.
I have nothing further.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Hennessy?
Don't have anything for tonight either.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mills?
Yeah, I just, just to thank, everybody just to be careful, you know, that's not a schools open, just be really cognizant of any, any illnesses or stuff like that, with the, with the children, with the students and families and stuff like that, and just to take the precautions that we really need to continue doing and not let, let down. Other than that, we have a wonderful, wonderful day, and Mike is just around the corner.
Yeah. And Mr. Biggins.
Flowers are coming.
Sorry.
Just, I'm, I'm really excited about some of the sports getting back into session, it's really great to see Bulldog Football coming back. I know some of these Rockland coaches have a time-honored tradition of wearing shorts all the way through the fall, and I'm looking forward to seeing as if they're still that tough all through this, through this type of weather. But on the side, I'm also very excited to let youth parents know that Rockland Youth Lacrosse registration is going to be opening very soon, so keep your ear to the ground on that. If you've never played before, don't hesitate for a second to pick it up. We've got a lot of great coaches who are very happy to teach, it's a wonderful, fast sport, and what a great way to get your kids off the couch after this really restrictive winter. Anyway, that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Biggins, are you coaching?
I am, yes, I am.
Great, they'll be lucky to have you.
Well, thank you. A lot of fun, best part of my day.
It's a lot of fun, right, out there with them, I think that's the whole, yeah, that's why we do all this, right, because we get to do it. All right, I have nothing for myself, so with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Roll call again, Mr. Mills?
Yes, absolutely, positively.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Biggins?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hennessy?
Of course, yes.
Okay, and I'm a yes too, have a good night, thank you all.
Thank you.